Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Bresmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toth.
Yes.
So, council and guests, the reason we're calling this meeting today as a special meeting is because the middle of the week, we learned that regarding the national rollout of 5G antennas to support the 5G service, that communities needed to have in place by April 15th some regulations governing the siting and rules for placement within a community. If a community was unprepared for that, then someone, a company that was submitting an application to do business within the community would essentially, their application would essentially rule because without guidelines, the FCC order disallows, and John can correct me if I'm getting this a little bit backwards, but anyway, the FCC ruling essentially stated that you can't go backwards and create rules after the fact. This is important for probably a number of cities around the country that have pending applications. Fairfield does not have any pending applications for 5G, so I want to make that very clear at this point in time. But today is April 12th, and Monday is April 15th, and we don't want to take any chances because on April 15th, someone could walk into City Hall and submit an application for a permit to roll out this technology. So, we're being precautionary today to take a step to create a resolution and some general guidelines for a rollout. We've looked at some other ordinances that cities in Iowa are putting together. There are probably about a half dozen other cities that are doing the same thing today, going through a special meeting process. Aaron, our city administrator, received a call from a city in the Des Moines metro area today, wondering what the heck's going on, and should we be doing anything? So, I think that there are a lot of places that are a little, that are still in the dark as far as what is required of them, so we want to take that step today. Now, our city attorney, John Morrissey, is going to talk about the resolution and what we're going to propose for adopted guidelines for today. And the guidelines that we will adopt through this resolution is essentially just a resolution. It is not codified law. The difference is that we can go back and amend anything at this time. We do intend to create a permanent ordinance governing this, and that is a process where we will go through three readings, three public hearings, to take comments about what is proposed, and the committee, the Franchise and Utilities Committee that's chaired by Doug Flornoy, will, you know, begin meeting on that, reviewing a lot of model ordinances. I've received many model ordinances and suggestions from environmental organizations, from other cities that are trying to modify as best they can the impact that this technology will have on the community. The basic difference in the technology is, right now, your cell service is essentially serviced by towers that are outside of our city limits generally. There are two within our city limits, both in the manufacturing district, which is what our ordinance to date only allows for. But the 5G technology is something where it's a smaller antenna-based system that has many more units of service attached to it that form a network of service within the community, so they are going to be looking to get into commercial and residential areas to provide the service. The FCC created rules on this about a year ago, and essentially, the prologue to their final ruling was that this is a global race for this technology to be available to society for the purpose of growing our economy. And because the United States wants to lead in that regard, they are proposing that they have essentially capped and defined areas within their rules already that will disallow some of the elements of local control and home rule that we would like to know that we have the protections of. So, it's limiting us. Iowa, the Iowa legislature also has an Iowa Cell Siting Act, which has uniform rules and regulations for applications, and it's essentially a list of about 14 different points or 13 different points that are not allowed, that local governments are not allowed to inhibit in the development of this. So, there's great support for this already at the federal and the state level for rolling this out, so we want to do the best we can with the process of designing an ordinance that will limit that impact, but that is not what we're doing here tonight. What we're doing here tonight is essentially putting something in place that will protect us should we get an application within the next week, and that we are prepared in some way. We can modify these guidelines, and we can approach that. Now, this is not a public hearing. We're not going to be taking testimony tonight for that. It's just, this is essentially, you know, a meeting for us to go over these, the resolution and guidelines, and then we will, you know, get on with the practice of creating an ordinance, opening up our public hearing and discussion. So, whatever we received tonight would be redundant based on what we're going to receive as testimony once we go through our ordinance process. So, at that point, for an introduction, I just want to introduce our city attorney, John Morrissey, to talk about the resolution.
They're clapping for you.
Well, no, it's for you, John.
All right. That was a pretty thorough introduction, and basically, the resolution, has everybody seen it?
Yes, and we'll pull that up, please, Jason, on the monitor.
The resolution.
Thanks.
He's on it.
The resolution is a page-long, and it's just a few paragraphs, and it talks about what is underlying our reason to adopt some policies. We did do some research in the last week. This really is as new as the mayor said. There was, I got a notice from Municipal Attorneys Association and the Bar Association. They were having a free webinar for a noon hour on 5G small cell developments, and I listened in. This was news to me. Both the city administrator and I had been to seminars in recent months where this was not a topic of discussion at the seminars, and so, looking at it, we decided, well, let's see what anybody else is doing, let's see what the discussion is. The order from the FCC, as the mayor said, it was last year. The FCC rulemaking procedures take several months. They put it out to the industry, they put it out to the consumer. You get at least 120-day time period for responding and so forth. This was not on our radar as far as what we were responding to, but it also, once it is ordered, they set some time out into the future for response time from the people affected by the order, and that was April 15th. People that are in the business of keeping track of the cell industry, that, believe me, that isn't me. I have, I've had a cellphone for the last 18 months that's a smartphone. Before that, I had a flip phone because people told me that was more secure, and I was not an expert in either. So, as far as the technology behind them, though, years ago, we had a discussion here in the council chambers for about two months about big cell towers, and a cell tower that was placed centrally in a zoned business area up on North Fourth Street that resulted ultimately in us having a policy for about 18 months of a moratorium on any more towers. We didn't have any more towers in the next 18 months, and the moratorium after that time expired, and we haven't had any more towers than I'm aware of since then. Our present zoning on big towers keeps them either in the industrial area as a preferred location or out of town. So, from that standpoint, that was a controversy at one time, pretty much died. We don't know if this is a controversy or not yet, but my understanding is, you know, the crowd didn't come here because they like to listen to me.
John, they are laughing at you, not at me.
That's fair, that's fair, yeah. So, what we did after this hurried seminar in the last few days, Aaron and I talked. Aaron had been out looking at what other towns were doing and talking to other administrators. I got ahold of the league and the Municipal Attorneys Association to see who else was on the radar so far. We both came up with some example policies that were being adopted. A policy can be adopted by resolution. It's not an ordinance. You don't necessarily have the same kind of hearings about policies that you do on ordinances, and the ordnancing is a process that the council regularly involves the public in. The ordinance goes through usually three readings. We've had ordinances, one that comes to mind, it took us about six months to get what we wanted in the end, was our animal control ordinance a few years ago, and that had input from people all over the state as well as in the community, and the three readings gave rise to passing back to, through parliamentary procedures, to other committee hearings on it and so forth. This could turn into that, but the thing about this is that I think we have to respect that's already out there is, the FCC rules generally control or preempted federally on all kinds of communication rules. The Iowa legislature has also preempted this in certain areas, and they have a Title HC siting regulation that says, basically, we can't do something more restrictive than they've done, but we can do some things that are within our bailiwick as far as locality. So, we can deal with things as far as how our right-of-way is used, if it's going to be cited in the right-of-way. We can do things about the neighborhood practicality of siting proposals, and I'll explain that in a minute, and things that have to do with our general interest in our community health, community safety, community fire concerns, community concerns about environmental health and so forth, in considering what our policy is going to be, and if we adopt an ordinance within the confines of what we're preempted by, we can also take those things into consideration because that's what our town is allowed to do within its limitations. What we've kind of pictured, and, you know, this is just my mental picture, but is that these are small relay transmitters that are being proposed to be sited in our community, most likely in right-of-way areas, and that, we're talking about alleys, we're talking about poles in the streets, we're talking about, I know that there were some antennas over on our water towers. There are things that get placed on structures. These are smaller transmitters. The idea is they relay about a radius of 500 feet, out a few hundred more feet than that, but they hit another transmitter, and the relay goes on. One pictured siting example suggested that possibly you'd have one of these sited in each city block. If that happened in this town, we'd have several hundred of these small transmitters on poles or sited around the community. We're not sure that the technology requires that much, but what you can picture this as is at least a five-gallon bucket. We had a couple of photographs of them sited in another community, and they were better looking than a five-gallon bucket, but they weren't much bigger, and the transmitter's inside because it's supposed to be shielded, and they're up more than 10 feet off the ground, and the siting on these things is intended to be unobtrusive, not ugly to see, probably not any more noticeable than the pole it's on was to start with. So, you know, with that in mind, what Aaron and I and the committee and the mayor have done so far is we've looked at other communities' efforts in this area. There aren't very many ordinances about this yet, and the only activity in 5G that we think is going on right now would be in metro areas that are much bigger than us. Davenport has adopted an ordinance. City of Dubuque is working on an ordinance. I don't know if they'll have an ordinance by the 15th or not. Their city attorney is a classmate of mine, so I'm expecting to hear from him by Monday. But, we looked at City of Cascade as an example of a policy. They have one, is a conglomeration of some other communities' efforts. We looked at Charles City, which borrowed Cascades, and a couple other communities. We looked at, let's see.
Marion.
We did Marion. We looked at a model wireless technology siting ordinance that the Iowa legislature tied in with Iowa Code Chapter HC, and essentially, I think the preference was to start out with as simple and straightforward a policy statement as we could find, and we liked the Cascade example, and that is basically what this resolution is wrapped around. We added a little bit to a recommended resolution that they had circulated, which basically spells out the way we see what our role is in this and what our intent as a body that can legislate has as an intention. So, the big middle paragraph there, where we're preserving as much local authority as permitted by state and federal law, which we acknowledge preemptus, over installation of these small cell facilities, on our rights-of-way and upon our infrastructure, is critical to effective right-of-way management. The legislature passed a Title 480 section of the Iowa Code, which recognizes that cities have a right and a responsibility to manage their rights-of-way, and that we can charge for some of the expenses associated with that if somebody's in there utilizing their franchise or their permitted activity as a utility. That being said, what goes along with our management of the right-of-way includes our health and safety codes, we do have those, construction trade codes. We don't have a per se building code, but we've got other parts of our ordinances that go into zoning and to building permits and things like that that are applicable. Our fire codes, definitely an applicable matter. Environmental standards, we have things spread throughout our city ordinances that deal with environmental considerations, and then aesthetic compatibility considerations as far as, you know, do we really want to have one of these five-gallon buckets on every neighborhood in the town? And, you know, that's not a question that we necessarily have the right to say, we don't like the design of your enclosure.
Yes, we do.
Well, you, all I can tell you is that the preemptive regulations on this go into things like what you would hope you could do versus what you're really allowed to do. We cannot, and it's both in the state law and in the federal law, we can't require the utility to do testing for us on the frequency effects technologically or scientifically as far as these devices and these signals. That's reserved by the FCC and by the state legislature to the trade community and the regulators of the trade community beyond us. But all these other things that apply to what a city can do with its right-of-way, we can be out there. We can look at this in terms of, do we want to add something to our zoning ordinance about the preferred locations for these kinds of things, or the non-preferred locations for these things? We can, when a person comes to us with a permit request, we can tell them we want a thorough review of how this is going to impact or appear to impact the neighborhood, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, the use of the right-of-way or the future use of the right-of-way that we may projecting as a town, and we do have more on the plate than just something that the feds and the state government have squeezed us down to. We have home rule yet to the extent we can look at this in a variety of ways and give it some consideration, but considering the effect of frequencies on the human anatomy, that isn't going to be part of any discussion we can have, we're preempted from having that. But the rest of these things in that middle paragraph there.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Well, you got to go to Washington DC if you want to have that discussion with the trade. I'm sorry, but we're preempted.
I was just saying.
We don't get to vote on this.
John, you can direct your discussion to the council for right now, because we want to get through the ordinance.
So, as much has been said, did we get the Cascade example of the policies?
Yeah, we have a policy in front of us.
Okay, all right. So, the resolution goes to about 10 pages of policies, which we want to adopt, to have something in place if an application would come in. And the seminar presenters were people that work in this trade as far as the law having to do with communications law, and their impression is that there are two or three things that can happen in the next few months. One is the FCC order is on appeal in the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, federal court out in the DC area. So, we don't know how that's going to turn out. The question came up during the webinar about this. Should we assume that there may be some parts of this that are overturned, and that we may not have to worry about April 15th as a timeline? And the vote was two to one that that's not a good idea. You should never bet on what the court might do. All of them said there are parts of the FCC order that seem to overreach, but all of them said I would still do something by April 15th, so you've got a void filled if somebody does come in at the last minute with a permit application. So, that's why we're sitting here, is we don't want a void, and a policy will fill the void. Next question that came up in the webinar was, if you have policies, is that enough? That's all what the FCC order says, is that you have at least April 15th as a timeline where if you have policies in effect, or regulations, or ordinances, then they can be given consideration. If you don't have them in effect, and on April 15th, you're sitting there holding an application from somebody in the trade, you're going to be stuck as not having it. Question next was, well, yeah, but what if nobody applies until May, and between now and then, you put something in effect? Will you be able to apply that? That was a maybe, as far as if you beat the applicant, you can tell him that it was in effect, and you're not passing rules after the fact. We have a constitution, the state and the federal constitutions both prohibit after-the-fact legislation to point at a particular subject or a particular party, so those kinds of ex post facto laws, we can't do after the fact.
Okay. I'm going to just, I want to open up to the council right now. Council, you've seen the resolution. Understand the business that we're looking to do today. Any questions on that for John?
Yes, John. Just to clarify, the small cell guidelines that the resolution proposes to adopt, are they going to be at some point subject to amendment? Will we be able to?
They could be amended anytime simply by a resolution. When we adopt something by a resolution, we can go back and parliamentary procedures allow us to amend, modify, repeal, reconsider, all of those things, just with another resolution. So, yes, that's a very, very good possibility. We can also use the resolution as a stepping stone into an ordinance.
So, the guidelines, perhaps after public hearing, could be modified? Is that right?
That's right.
For example, on page three of the guidelines, it states, there's a section which is titled "Order of Preference for Locations."
Right.
Paragraph B, "Least Preferable Location," and it lists and sequence those areas that are least preferred to build out a small wireless facility.
Right.
You see what I'm referring to? And it shows as the least preferred preference would be a downtown business district, the least preferred, and above that, agricultural review districts, above that, parks, and above that, residential districts.
Right.
Architectural review districts.
Yeah. So, my understanding is what you're telling me that if, after public comment, after public discussion, it could be the sequence or the order of that location or preference could be changed? Is that right?
You could.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm not telling you the best preference or no preference sequences. That's for you guys to decide.
But if, for example, some 5G installer came in on Monday with an application, these would be guidelines that have to?
Right. Our administrator would take the guidelines and look at it as a checklist, probably start out by asking them, what have you done to look into the siting locations that we prefer? Have you been out to the industrial park to see what's available, or available on the edge of town? And go through the list of preferables first, and then see if they have a good reason to go to a less preferable location.
Yeah.
It might end there.
Right. I'm not prepared to suggest any change, but I just want, for the citizens who are here, they want to be aware that there's going to be an opportunity for public comment and discussion, which could, which could change, alter these guidelines.
Right. These guidelines, in comparing them with some of the other guidelines that aren't necessarily worded the same, our comparison did cause us to conclude that most of the other examples of policies did have the most preferable versus the least preferable language in there somewhere. They had language about locating and co-locating on whatever pole or device was going to be a mount for the transmitter containers, and there are probably going to be some differences of opinion over how frequently there should be one of them, or what's necessary to maintain a signal and so forth. And you're going to be balancing what the technology says is necessary versus all of our criteria that we hold some sway over as far as the city. So, you know, we could have a lot of changes.
That's right, but, you know, we're just receiving this the last day or so, couple of days, and I don't think most citizens have seen it, so they may want to have a chance to weigh in, and they're going to have a, they're going to have a chance. Thanks.
Yeah, I would anticipate that if you adopt this, we'll have the clerk on a bunch of copies, and it'll be on our website so that people can look this over, and then it's going to be up to the committee and Chairman Flornoy as far as whether they want to bring something else out as far as an ordinance, or they want to leave it at this policy. If we don't have any activity on this, and a year or two goes by, I mean, we may not have a public policy reason for an ordinance yet, but we never know. You might have something that is burning a hole in the council's desks by the time, you know, this thing is considered.
Well, it's been an issue that many members of the community Well, it's been an issue that many members of the community have been watching closely for some time, and I think this, in a sense, triggers, you know, some beginning to it, because there is a threshold date, and I'm sure that the industry is aware of this threshold date. So, wherever they're going to begin, they're going to begin. We don't know whether they're going to be in Fairfield or not, but it's certainly time for us to determine what it is that we want to have in place. And again, and Doug is aware of this, that, you know, his committee will, you know, review, take public input, and look at best ordinances. And from what I've seen in reviewing some other ordinances today from around the country, is most of them do reflect policy in the way that our rules do right now, but I've also found some more protective guidelines that we should look at and potentially include as well. We also have not really talked to anybody within the industry to get a sense of what a build-out, you know, could look like, or what an application could look like, and talked with Aaron about possibly trying to get a peek at something like that as well. So, we understand a little bit better what it would look like, what we would be facing.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I've got another, one of my other jobs.
Yeah, I know you could only be here till 5:00.
I'm very supportive we're starting with this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, counsel? Okay, I'm going to take a couple comments from the group that's here, so, yes, sir? Yes, Dr. Fagan, if you'd like, come to the microphone.
Jeff, we'd like to hear from the state of how it is restricted.
Okay, so, I wanted to, AIA, I wanted to express my appreciation that you're jumping forward to take action with this. It's really important, and this sort of caught many of us by surprise in terms of how, you know, the timeline on this, like next Tuesday it is?
Well, let's just say, we don't know if there's a real timeline for any development in Fairfield, but we just have to have some regulations in place to protect ourselves by Monday.
Yeah. In looking at this, the point that I'd like to raise.
Say who you are.
Well, my name is John Fagan. I'm a professor of molecular biology at Maharshi University. I'm the chief executive and chief scientist at the Health Research Institute, also here in Fairfield. This ordinance that you're going to pass, the idea is that it's going to protect us, okay? That it's going to be something that's going to take care of, you know, be a starting point to protect us. It's important to consider whether it also creates vulnerabilities. We just heard about a section that talks about least preferable sections or locations, but on page seven of this, it explains that these can be located up as close as every 250 feet throughout our community. So, this is in the regulation, or in the guidelines that you're considering passing, and I'm wondering if we should look carefully at issues in here, at these statements in here, to make sure that we're not essentially opening the door for one of these installations every 250 feet along every street of our city. So, I would suggest that during, and obviously, I just have seen this for the last few minutes, and so it's difficult to identify everything. The one other concern that I would have is that this is primarily looking at the aesthetics of the placement of these things. And there is a large and growing and well-established scientific literature talking about the safety of the kinds of radiation that these installations will generate. This is not your cellphone, this is not your mobile phone in your home, this is a much more powerful piece of equipment that's going to be put right next to your house every 250 feet. I think there should be some way for us to look at the safety issues around this, and if that could be taken into account in some way, that would be my main request. Thank you.
You know, I guess, one of the things that we did discuss was to try to, you know, to come in with something that is more restrictive rather than less, and, you know, we were looking at the sighting preferences as one of those ways, but, you know, an amendment to this tonight to increase that to 1,000 feet, and let the company come back and ask for something closer, I think that would be fine. So, okay, we'll take one more presentation.
I'm John Lippman, AIA, and I'm speaking here as the North American Director for Maharishi Vastu Architecture, which is a system that has been used on about $200 million in construction in Fairfield and Jefferson County and Beattie City to date, and vastly more worldwide, and which I think accounts for the majority of housing starts here in Fairfield in recent years. There's a major trend in the US and world towards what are called wellness communities, now $135 billion industry in the US and growing fast. Worldwide, there are 500 wellness communities, and Fairfield is among them, as documented in an article in US News &amp; World Report last fall. Electromagnetic radiation is a concern in wellness communities. If Fairfield wants to be a leader and not lag behind in this real estate trend, it might consider paying attention to the health impact, to the degree that it has legislative control over 5G radiation, because I predict that this concern will eventually be mainstream. One of the core elements of Maharishi Vastu Architecture is the use of non-toxic construction materials, and avoiding the hazard of electrical and magnetic radiation, which is known by the acronym EMF. Our houses are wired using specific protocols that greatly reduce the level of EMF in them. And as you know, we have argued successfully before the Iowa Utility Board this past few months, which after listening to the medical and scientific evidence and witnesses who we admitted, granted us the right to retain non-EMF-producing electric and gas meters, and for communities to establish themselves as opt-out communities free of broadcasting meters on houses. So, this is not a fringe concern, it is a concern which has been accepted by the Iowa Utility Board. The hundreds of Iowa homeowners and Fairfield homeowners using this system, and the thousands across the United States rely on my office to give them guidelines on healthful construction. My office's task is to review the findings by accredited researchers worldwide, and adopt a conservative position in the interest of the safety of our clients and all others. I don't speak as a medical or scientific authority on the hazard of safety as 5G, which, of course, John Fagan does. There is enormous debate in those communities on this subject, and serious health concerns by many physicians and epidemiologists about the potential health hazards of 5G. And so, until the debate is settled, I wish to recommend to the city council that the only conservative position that can be taken is to do all that it can in this proposed language to limit the installation of 5G in Fairfield. I would like to suggest that residential neighborhoods be given the greatest preference for avoiding installation of 5G transmitters, because people have the least freedom to avoid exposure in their home. You buy a home, you're stuck in it, and people spend one-half of their life in their homes. And so, to the degree that it is a severe concern that there are health hazards, I would like to recommend that using the legislative ability that Fairfield does, that it consider making residential neighborhoods the most protected. And finally, the Jefferson County Tax Assessor values Maharishi Vastu homes substantially higher than comparable conventional homes. 5G will jeopardize this tax premium for the reasons that I've described. And were Fairfield to become a 5G-free community, it will lead to new opportunities for robust population growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I think at this point, we understand, you know, the community concerns that are out there. We do want to start with a resolution this evening to have something in place, but I think the committee will quickly take some public input on amending in ways that we can within the law. And then, at that point in time, as we learn more about this and can create a permanent ordinance, we'll go through more of a public hearing process. So, I don't want anybody to feel stifled, but at the same time, this is an action we just have to take tonight as one step, and then as a community, we'll get started in the direction of creating the safest environment we possibly can within the law. So, I think we had a good suggestion tonight, if the council's open to it, an amendment to the Page Four, New Wireless Support Structure, I'm sorry, that wasn't Page Four.
Page Seven, I think.
Page Seven, which was New Wireless Support Structures, that we changed 250 feet to 1,000 feet as a starting point for a minimum distance for placement. Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? So, at this point, we are approving the resolution with the attached guidelines. Everyone's clear on that? Okay, please, yeah?
I think there was a suggestion about changing the sequence on Page Three, on terms of preference for a install of 5G.
For at least preferable.
For the least preferable, yes.
Okay, so, we do have an order, that's correct, it was one through four.
Right.
With the downtown business district being the least, is there a proposal to make the residential district the least?
So moved.
And flip those?
So moved.
Okay, so, that will, we'll just, we'll add that to the motion, and so, the original motion was by Thompson. Thompson, if you'll also accept that amendment as well? Okay, so, we are, yes?
Yes. Since this is being presented sort of as a placeholder proposal, could there be a clause in it that says, "This is a document that is in process, and we will not consider applications"?
We don't really want that to protect ourselves from the law. I don't think that would be in our best interest, John. I think we want to have.
Well, I'm just saying that.
I understand what you're saying, but Aaron can't enforce our city regulation, can't enforce our policies if it's not passed.
Let me finish my sentence. You have a statement in there saying that we will not consider applications until we have a full document in place. That way...
Well, I think we should do that through our permitting process, and I think that's going to be a part of what we will get going.
Okay, great.
I think there's really going to be a long road for someone who would submit an application. We don't have the permitting process in place, that can be a part of it. So, I think we have ways to protect ourselves in terms of something that would be coming.
Can we go back to the list here and be clear about what we're doing? Before we get interrupted, please, we have to finish what we started already. Just a minute.
I have one very simple question.
Ed, can we finish what was proposed and make sure we're clear on that?
Yes.
Before we get other interruptions.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, which adopts small cell facility guidelines. And in the guidelines, we've made two amendments. We have increased the distance from, the antennas from 250 feet minimum to 1,000 feet. And then also, we have moved the downtown business district into the number-one position for the least preferable location, and residential districts to number four, which would be the least desirable preference.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me.
What you can't do is just shout out, okay?
I'm still trying to clarify with Ed, because that's not what I understood to be, so I just want to be very clear here about what we're doing.
Okay, what was your understanding?
So, now you're saying it's going to be downtown business district is number one on this Part B, least preferable location?
Yes.
And then two would be parks, three, the architectural review districts, and four, residential districts.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that, because it wasn't clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion in the council? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So, that will get us in place for April 15th, and then we will, we have, the guidelines will amend them, we do have them on the website right now, so you can share them with people there, and also the copy of the resolution. And then, we will also notify of public meetings for input going forward on both the set of guidelines we established tonight, and also in the creation of an ordinance. So, thank you all for attending, and I entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Thompson, second by Toohill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Exposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.